All the meeting to order for the NISWA planning commission board of adjustments for Monday, June 13, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Roll call please. Jesse Zahn.
Gary Harris.
Josh Young.
No, Jake.
Well, Joe DeVal.
Maggie Wentler.
Bethany Soderland.
And Sean. Alright, well now proceed on site visits.
I uh.
You got here now you have to get back out.
Alright. Y'all get a lot to go over.
Hey, it was nice to see you. I'm sure everybody's going.
Yeah, so we'll get it both to the other side first and then.
On this one, it's not. Like sometimes I'll break the packet. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, we'll probably solidify a few people, but most part of it is.
You what? See, we're creating a big, all we have to look at.
We've got our machines ready.
We'll be back in a minute.
Yep, so.
Yeah, I got, I'm in the back. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right, I would like to reconvene and call the meeting to order for the NISWA Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for Monday, June 13. Do we need another roll call? Are we good? We're good. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Being now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We'll move.
I'll second all those in favor. I'll suppose the motion carries. Moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, two sets. May third. First one, May third, May 16.
All right, next to approve the meeting, you want to separate motions or do you want to go at the same time? Okay. Next to approve the meeting minutes for May 3, 2022. Are there any corrections?
No.
Here in our antenna motion approve the minutes.
So move.
I'll second all those in favor. I all those opposed, motion carries. Next to approve the meeting minutes for the special meeting on May 16, 2022. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Very none on entertain a motion to prove those minutes.
So move.
I'll second all those in favor. I was supposed most carries. Okay. All right, next item is an open forum being now that we have nobody in the crowd, I will open and close those. Now moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
A second, all those in favor. I all those opposed, motion carries. Okay. First item is a conditional use permit, application 008-22, the applicant is requesting to obtain a conditional use permit for the construction of a two-story addition to Big X Brewing Company in the Central Business District. The subject property is located at 25435 Main Street. PID 28110643, owner Michael French, applicant Vaughn Larson, North House Residential Design. So our applicant present, please come to the desk and say your name. Vaughn Larson. Bethany, your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the demolition of an existing detached garage and to construct in its place. A two-story addition to the existing Big Axe Brewing Company within the Central Business zoning district. This proposed addition will allow for the expansion of the existing tap room for an additional five to six tables. The main floor of the addition will contain the brewing facilities with the proposed second story hosting a bar area bathroom and will accommodate approximately 58 for private parties and events. Loading areas are proposed on the southwest side of the addition with access off of what is noted on the survey as Smiley Avenue. All lighting and signage will be subject to the NISWA code of ordinances. Public Works will be monitoring usage. Please see the memo included in your packet. Proper owner will be responsible to obtain all necessary permits and required inspections.
Being as though we have nobody in the audience, I'm assuming you two don't want to comment. Okay. I'll open and close public comments. Do you want to just give us a brief overview of the project?
Yeah, sure. So the owner asked me to be at the meetings and he lives in the cities and it's a form of travel, so I'll do the best I can. Right now they do a lot of their production in the taproom. And they have to pipe the beer out to the garage where they can it. And put it in the kegs and they have to bring it back in, put it in the cooler for serving it in the taproom. So they would like to tear down the old garage, put on a reasonable addition with all the beer making out there in canning. And that would then give the space back to the taproom, which I think it was originally designed for. And then also expand possible expansion for private party room upstairs. It would just streamline their process and make their life quite a bit easier and keep the beer mess out of the the taproom. That's, that's, I know any questions?
Gary, do you have any questions? So I'll score on our horn here.
Only two things. I'll preface my comments by saying that I think that this improvement. Or this, you know, the construction that you're going to do on the big ax is going to be a really good thing, I think, in my opinion, for from what I see for the city. Especially when you go by on 371 and you look over there, you're gonna see this nice new facility because it's kind of tough looking when you go by there right now, not your property necessarily, but you see the stuff to the side. Now, some of that may or may not be gone, but we'll see. The two concerns I've got, and one of them is minor, it's one is on the your plan shows the proposed plan shows that there's going to be a signage on the 371 side of the building. There's a big axe sign up there. Is there one on the front of the building and is there a problem with having two signs on on the business or not?
They would be required to follow the ordinance requirements for any signage. As of this point, none of their proposals included any variance requests or any additional signs than what is allowed. So I would have to look at the tables just to verify that answer for you.
Yeah, I guess the question is, are you looking for extra signage beyond what you've got now? Or you're just moving that sign?
At this point, I decided it looked good on the drawings. Yeah, there is one sign on the angle part of the taproom there.
Right.
I would have no problem revising the drawings to remove the signs, if the one is.
I mean, will that be the only sign that's on the building then? The red and black one there?
I would think they would want to leave the one on the angle part, which is.
Because I assume there's one on the street side, isn't it? Oh, yeah. Okay, okay, okay. There's a total of that signage, the square footage, you know, like 48 square feet.
It depends on the square footage of the the face of the building facing the road. It depends on a lot of different factors.
That was one comment, but you can work that out with the planner. So you know, as far as the art that's goes. And then the other thing from the site visits, when we're out there, you've obviously can have some tree, tree decisions to make. There's some there's some trees that are gonna have to come out of there. So I mean, it's obviously that's a just a normal course of your construction.
I assume anything within 10 feet.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Other than that, no, I don't have anything else.
I had a question about the mind dot, and I did not get that originally. Can you, can you touch on what mind dot, what their feedback was?
They emailed saying that their concern was any utilities run parallel, I believe, Gary. You can help me out here as far as the utilities running parallel in the road right of way and that that would not be allowed. It's my understanding with this project is that new utilities would be run that way and everything is pretty much existing and would just be then transferred into the addition.
Yeah, so there should be no issue.
Yeah, I think what Mindot was saying was if you put some underground cables, electric or phone or cable or something, and it's in the right of way. They're not going to give you a permit for that, you know, and it'll be on your dime. And at some point in the future, if those need to be changed, it's won't be mind that's responsibility. I think that's what was was the gist of that letter. So but I'm not sure. It was kind of foggy.
So and there's no plans for that, everything.
Yeah, I know. I didn't see anything on the plan. I mean, they, they said they saw something there, but I didn't see it, so.
John, do you have any questions?
I only have one parking number of employees. There's a lot of parking around here for employees.
Yeah, no, it would stay about the same.
Working there at peak time.
It would just be a guess for me. It won't change from what it is now because we're not changing any production now. The one increase in parking would be is that the party room was was done.
Because they really shouldn't park on Main Street. You know, that's pretty much for tourism and stuff. So that's one thing I like to.
Over the employees. Yeah, you know, the property doesn't have any space for parking now, so it would, I would imagine it would just, they just wedge themselves in like.
Well, that's tell them in that property, so. So it's, and I'm sure the employees get there before anybody else does, so that they probably get those first spots, except on July 4 weekend, you know.
Or people like me, I don't even like to drive back there because afraid to get stuck.
Yeah, yeah. So. But we run into that and all in the business, you know, central business district, it doesn't matter who's building the new, new facility, whether it's you know, Moxie's Harrison or anybody else. Now, they had room to put a few spaces in, but but the vast majority of the parking is on the city. You know, it's in public parking in the streets and that's what it's there for. So somebody has to walk two blocks, I guess, that's so be it.
Parking is a concern for sure. That's also a good problem to have in a lot of ways, but it is still a problem. Yeah.
Yeah, there's some, there's some cities around here where towns where you go in and parking's not a problem and there's a lot of places for lease, so.
Yeah, I had a question about signage, but you brought that up, so I'll go to my other one. On the certificate of survey. There's one section down there. There's a section down there. It's hard to see. It says 3.01 foot deck encroachment. Could you explain that?
Yeah, that the the deck does stick out over the property line rate on that south side of the building.
Is encroaching on the parking area?
It sticks out over the property line onto the sidewalk, I believe, is what it is.
Well, the question is, is that your property or not?
No, I believe the property line is, you have the dark one there.
That deck is built on the city right of way.
In other words, if we prove this, we're approving an encroachment upon a public property.
I want to presume that that deck has been there for quite some time, has it not? Now, that goes as far back as to when it was Mickey's sub shop and then prior.
Before that, it was country cooking.
So. I agree with, I agree with you, Don. If we still proceed to approve it. Where, or excuse me, if that was to be a reason to deny it. It was already approved in the past for different renovations from those different businesses.
I mean, unless you say deny it, but you can approve what we have here, subject to review by the attorney for that parcel. Because once a private party takes over public property. You got a problem. It's just a little glitch. There must be some way to fix it.
Well, we're, we're approving, have been asked to approve the the, the addition to this property, not necessarily, not, not anything else. We're not, I don't think we're being asked to approve or to grandfather anything that's happened prior, and I don't see any reason that we can't make that a condition of the approval that it doesn't include that deck encroachment into into Mill Avenue.
If this was considered a, you know, pre-existing legal non-conformity, we would just, you know, treat this as we would any other permit, whereas you cannot increase the non-conformity. But you could increase to the building as long as you built within the building envelope. And you didn't increase that non-conformity. Obviously, we would not be able to issue any permits that would allow him to move the building out further into the road right of way. As far as getting our attorney's opinion on what can be do direct, what we can do to rectify the situation. That's something that I'd be happy to look into if that's something that you would like.
Are you aware of any past variances for?
I am not. No.
Okay. Jesse, did you have any questions?
Hmm, no, I don't have any more at this time.
Our esteemed engineer. Well, if there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion.
Let me get the right page here. I'll move that the NISWA Planning Commission Board of Adjustment to approve the conditional use permit application 008-22 to construct an addition to existing business within the central business zoning district. It'd be subject to the findings of fact. And conditions that are already listed in the staff report. Think that covers it.
I will second all those in favor.
I.
I. All those posed. Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
When's that, when's that gonna be done?
Well, I'll have to talk to Chris and find out. He'll be excited to hear.
See if you can find a contractor. Do it this year, huh?
Yeah, he wants to get started right away. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Second item is variance application 009-22, the applicant is requesting to obtain a variance from side yard setback to construct an addition on an existing dwelling and garage. to construct an addition on an existing dwelling and garage twelve feet from the property line where fifteen is required. The subject property is located at two two nine two five Old Government Trail. PID, PID two eight two six zero five two five on Golik. Owner, applicant Nathan Enbrook Funk. Our applicant is here, you want to state your name? Uh, my name is Nathan Funk. Bethany, your staff report.
The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for a two-story addition to an existing dwelling incorporating an existing non-conforming accessory structure twelve feet from the side lot line where fifteen feet is required. In nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Nisla issued a permit to construct a twenty-four by twenty-eight foot accessory structure, meeting all setbacks, including a fifteen-foot side yard setback. Unfortunately, after a survey, it was discovered that the garage was constructed thirteen feet from the side lot line in order to use the existing structure as part of the proposed addition of variance is required. The applicant proposes to add seven bedrooms to the dwelling, requiring a water meter and monitoring by Public Works, please see the memo in your packets for specifics. Uh, due to the close proximity to this addition to parcel, um, to the northwest, conditions have been recommended for vegetation standards and screening between the two parcels.
I'll open and close public comments. Do you want to briefly just touch on what your project is?
Yeah, we, uh, we're coming up on our third month at this property, uh, we closed on March twenty-fifth. Uh, my wife and I have five children, uh, ages two to fourteen. The current structure is, uh, a little too small. And so we know with growing kids and a big family and a lot of relatives that love to visit the area, uh, we figured we would add some bedrooms so that they could come visit. And that's really the gist of what we're looking to do. It seemed like the best way to add to the structure and kind of keep the footprint and really kind of the nicety of the place all intact.
So we had a letter from the immediate neighbor and they had, and I'm assuming you had contact with them and they had requested some screening, do you have any plans for screening after the construction has been completed?
Uh, what I talked to Kurt about was really, he wanted us to make sure we could preserve any trees as much as possible. Um, I offered up to build any additional fencing, I think you guys saw the fence that was there. Uh, he said no, uh, I guess the prior neighbor had a lot of junk in the yard, uh, we cleaned a lot of stuff up and we bought the place. And so for right now, we simply said, you know, once we finish the plans, we put some additional trees back, uh, kind of preserve that vegetation and, and put something there. Talked about some pine trees, you know, discussions about kind of what would grow in the soil, we said we'd work together with some kind of arborist to figure it out. But yeah, we definitely talked about it, and I think he actually sent in his letter that he supported.
We have received it.
We read.
It's a good guy.
Yep.
It was, he, he didn't seem to have, he had no problem at all with with the variance on the setback and.
I think he'd like to get rid of those sheds.
Well.
Those sheds that were sitting there.
No, it says on the plan they're going to be moved, are you moving them off the property or you just moving them?
Just get rid of them, if you want to buy them, give me a good number.
No.
It's very generous.
There was a, there was a time when I would have taken them.
Convert it to official, so you'll probably need it after.
That's a good point, Jesse.
There you go. So I guess to echo what comments they have on this letter to us, to you um, about your project, it would be just to attempt to save as many trees as possible. Looking at the property as we did, uh, I think it's going to be apparent that, well, judging of how you had one on your roof just a couple of weeks ago, um, it's almost inevitable to try to prevent an incident like that, having another structure, uh, extended over from that, it's going to be obviously, you're going to have to take something out. So, working with them as you have, I think is a very commendable thing, so.
Yeah, we're going to do the best we can, and even looking vegetation-wise to see if there's anything else we can do to block. See what else we can do to do that, but yeah, I think some of those trees will either have to come down or be trimmed up pretty good. So.
There's city sewer in this?
There is.
This is connected to the city?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right at the end. Uh, where that little box is, I don't know if it's labeled, uh, but right at the end where that was, and I think Bethany would actually talk to him a little bit about connection.
Yeah, included in the packet is a, uh, memo from Tom Ballmer, who's our Public Works Director. Um, goes into specifics as to what would be required. The plan is to monitor at this point, um, just due to the seasonality of, um, there's a lot of increase in bedrooms, but it's not full-time use. Um, so we would monitor just to make sure that we had the correct flow.
Worst that happens, they put a meter in at some point.
Yeah, that's.
Water meter would be required.
He spells it out, no.
Well, they are going to get that.
It is required for our ordinance, just due to the size alone, that he needs to have the water meter installed.
Right.
Yeah.
John, did you have any questions?
No. No.
No, I just want to talk about, I don't think there's a need. We're surely not required to have a key to your structure. Discuss the where you're talking.
Appreciate that, Joe.
Well, you just sit right on the thirty-foot setback for that block then, and the structure that's existing is in the block.
Correct.
Sorry, understood.
Which would have been before they made the building. And then you are right on that line, though you're not. It doesn't affect your going by it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to, um, City of Niswa Planning Zoning Board of Adjustment, uh, will approve the variance application zero zero nine dash two-two to request a twelve-foot side yard setback to construct an addition to the existing dwelling and garage within the Shoreland Residential Zoning District. All according to the findings of fact again by the city staff and the conditions shown. With, um, emphasis on the screening, but with the neighbor, with Mr. Landwear.
Yeah, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. Okay, the project.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Joe, thank you for all of that.
Watch out for trees.
Uh, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
I will second all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed, motion carries. Uh, new business none, old business none, city planners report.
I have nothing further other than the report that I've submitted, um. Does anybody have any questions? I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Permit numbers have increased.
They have. Which is nice, yes.
I guess I have one just inquiry, when speaking to all the lake associations, has there been any good negative, I guess primarily negative, uh, feedback from what took place about two months ago in regards to us trying to find more ideas to refine the ordinances, and have they presented them to you in a good manner to promote change?
Yeah, our meetings with the lake associations have been incredibly fruitful, um, we are hearing the same thing from all of them. Um, you know, in different ways, but we're getting great feedback as far, as, as far as what their concerns are. Um, what they would like to see as far as communication with the city. Um, ways that we can help, um, you know, we have regulation, they have voluntary compliance, which is incredibly powerful. Um, and just being able to use that, um, to get information out to property owners, it just ensures a much smoother riparian stewardship. Um, they have a lot of great ideas. We're learning a lot. Um, we're establishing great relationships and
Good.
It's been great. In addition to the Shoreline Ordinance Review, we have contracted with Chris Pence, I don't know if any of you are familiar with who Chris Pence is. Um, he was the Planning and Zoning Administrator for Crow Wing County and the city of Cross Lake, he has extensive, um, experience in ordinance review and revision. Um, and right now he is reviewing our ordinance. He is, um.
Excellent choice. I know, Chris.
Yeah, he's, um, it's, it's, it's an asset to have him working on this for the city in this one.
Sure, you said he was former for both those positions?
Yep, he is a, um, board conservationist, I believe.
Does he live in this one?
Board of, um, water and soil resources.
Does he live in this one? Well, we have an open seat to fill over here now, and, uh, you know.
I should ask it.
So right now, I guess, touching on that, I guess briefly, we do have two open positions.
We do.
So right now, if one of these three decided to, um, resign, then what?
We would not have a quorum. Um, it is, I believe, um, our liaison would be able to step in, in that instance. But we would have three at that point, um, but once again, that's incredibly close to.
Yeah.
Have we had, you, you're advertising.
We are.
Have we had any interest?
Well, I, I took your email you sent out, I think, on Thursday or Friday. Um, I'm gonna put some feelers out there for some people, I think that would be a benefit.
Yeah.
Not just, you know, a young guy like me that knows how to wear a button-up shirt, um. But I think that there are some people in the community that would be interested in stepping up.
That would be great.
Fingers crossed.
Watch your friends, family, strangers.
Mine are all too old.
Maybe we need one of those sign spinners out front.
Progressive insurance?
Yeah.
So if anybody has any questions about the permits, about, um, you know, things that we've got going on, um, the biggest, of course, would be the Shoreland Ordinance Review, I'm extremely excited to get that white paper, uh, it looks like we're going to have that definitely by the end of the summer. And, uh, move forward from there.
I have a something that's here neither here nor there, but I would like to, uh, I, I'm, I, I always commend our city staff for what they do. You know, and, uh, Maggie and everybody else that's been with us and helping us and, and in the past, and, and personally, I think what you are doing here, Bethany, I think is just, just really, really exemplary.
Thank you very much.
And you make our job a whole lot easier, I'll tell you.
I am, uh, really enjoying.
Because we had some sleepless nights for, for a couple of weeks, so, but you have, uh, you have, that's all been abated, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, I, um, I'm extremely fortunate to be here and I'm extremely proud to be here in this.
I second that, I've actually had some friends and neighbors come up and say the same things when going through the permitting process, it's, uh, it's very refreshing.
Well, I'm, I'm grateful, I, um, customer service is a high priority for me, and I've done customer service my whole life. Um, and it's a difficult process sometimes, especially if you've never been through it, and so it's our job to help bridge that, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're not just, you're not allowed to leave, was the only thing.
I have no plans.
Okay, good, great.
Stay away from the store as well.
Yeah.
I live very close, I don't have any plans of leaving, so.
Alright, any additional questions should be good, alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all is opposed, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.